Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 7th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room. And now, gentlemen, as we salute the American flag.
(inaudible)
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 I don't see the applicants, I don't see the representatives for the first public hearing, so I'm going to make a change on the agenda at the dais and move Saki Brewery up one. Make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a reminder, we're nearing the end of the review process on this. The applicants are seeking approval to renovate an existing building from the Stop &amp; Shop Grocery Store into a Saki manufacturing enterprise, along with the addition of a rice polishing building and a wastewater treatment facility in the rear. Gentlemen, welcome back.
Nice to see you again. Thank you for your combination.
Let me turn it over to table D. Anything new to add?
No, the only, um, no.[86.86][86.86](laughing)
Bronze.
We did have a comment on the resolution, but tell me when the appropriate time is.
Okey-dokey. We had some, in the interim since our last meeting, we were able to work through some lighting issues. There's still a couple of teensy hotspots, but I think that the board is comfortable with them. There's one that's a 10-point, but it's a hotspot with an LED bulb that dissipates to point two within about six feet if I measured correctly. So it's just, and it's also, it occurs, I believe there's a walkway from the rear, the most eastern part of the walk, parking area, over into the building where the angawa starts on the south side. So let me turn it over to consultants. Ms. Axelson, any comments?
Just quickly, that all, any remaining lighting comments are technical and they're conditions of approval.
Thank you. Mr. Sotero?
Nope.
Mr. Logan?
Uh, no.
To my left, Mr. Pickett, comments?
Yeah, just one quick question on the generator. The fuels for that, is it all self-contained in the unit? So, I'm, the generator.
The fuels for that, are they self-contained?
It's all self-contained.
Okay, with containment and all that, so it's not an issue. Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
No, I have no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
No additional comments.
Mr. Oliver?
No additional comments.
And Ms. Denabaly?
Only one, thank you for coming to Hyde Park. We appreciate it, and we look forward to this project going forward. Thanks.
I second that.
We have someone who's signed up, I believe, to speak from the public. Do you guys mind turning over the table for a moment? Mr. Ray Hannan, I believe.
(inaudible)
Come on up, Mr. Hannan.
And when you do, please introduce yourself and speak into the microphone.
My name is Ray Hannan. I live on 15 Red Barn Road, which butts up to the property that they're looking to do the brewery on. Business-wise, I'm all for it. I own and operate Hudson Valley Craft Beer Door, so I'll be more than happy to take my guests to your brewery and to bring more business to Hyde Park. I think that's a great thing. The only concern I have other than that is being that close to the brewery and where it's going to be. Alls I'm asking for is maybe some evergreen trees to be planted, just to kind of give like a little more privacy for our neighbors, you know, me and all my adjoining neighbors, just to kind of block out the noise from trucks coming through, any kind of other noise, maybe a better fence line. I know they said they're going to continue the sidewalk, which is great because that'll keep people from going through my yard and hopping over the fence to get there, which they did when I would stop and shop.
Are you on the U for Red Barn? Are you, where exactly are you on Red Barn?
My backyard butts up to Route 9 and then the corner of where the-
Oh, okay.
I know where you are now.
Okay.
Great.
So I'm right there. So, that's all I'm asking for.
Sure.
I mean, if we could do something like that, that'd be great. Other than that, if you guys need any help, I'm right around the corner. You know?
And just as a point of reference, the wastewater treatment facility does treat processed water only, not sanitary waste, as it's politely called.
Yep.
So there's not really a lot of odors associated with it. It's the water they use to process and manufacture the Saki.
Yep.
So, and I think we can make that a condition to add some evergreens. I need to take a look at the plantings or the planting schedule. So, thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about this application? No, there being no other public comment? Gentlemen, come back up. So, can we get a set of plans open? It's such a massive set that I can open mine, but it's going to take up-
Have they abbreviated one?
They have some room down there.
What?
Right.
A medium size would be easier, a medium size would be easier, but it's a full plan set. We need to show where the-
I'd use it just a final revision. Are they using the new sheets or are they-
Which sheet you want?
No, no. We need to look at a landscaping plan that shows the location of the wastewater treatment facility. I do.
Correct. Just a little-
For Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, I think that's all we've done. Yeah, I don't think it's even- You have the original one, the last revision?
Then we have a corner.
You do? It should be in there.
Yeah, here it is. Preliminary. He's talking about the-
Michael, this is slightly smaller. Do you know? Okay. I think it's a big one. I'll look it up here. You're not going to get it. He wants to look at the wastewater-
See what they're proposing over there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought he, I thought he-
He said he backs up to nine.
He backs up to nine and the-
Hannan.
Yep.
This is him.
Okay. So he's looking for, right in here.
He wants to see- He is. He wants to screen on this corner, which is right down on the corner.
So he's looking for something? Yeah.
This is your guy.
He's a second property opening.
But these are, this has natural, this has already trees and everything.
What are they?
We don't really like know what's there.
He wants, he wants some evergreens, right, throughout here. And it's just an extension so that people don't go.
Is that burn? I'm looking at the key card. That's burn?
Yes.
You might also want to let him know that there is a known sidewalk that leads people in.
He said that, I think he's making it more off. The other thing to think of, if you're going to plant in there, you probably have to grub that a little bit.
That's what I was going to say. It's got Russian center.
Might actually open it up.
It's got a fence there.
Yeah.
So we're looking at the site plan and the area that Mr. Hannan talked about. In order for you to plant evergreens in through there, I want to make sure you know that they're going to have to remove some of the natural vegetation that's there already.
Sure.
That would mean that with the evergreens, it might open it up more for you at first. I'm talking to Mr. Hannan back there to make sure you understand that. As the evergreens grow, it'll screen more properly, but at the beginning, in order to get evergreens like spruces or firs in there, you're going to have to remove the existing vegetation that's already sort of a natural buffer. Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
To plant, they can't just-
They can dig, you know, a small hole.
It's because they're putting something more substantial. So they'd have to go through and remove some of the trees that are existing right now along the property line, in the burned area.
If it's for access, it could also be a hedge. If it's just access you're concerned about, it could be a hedge. It doesn't have to be trees.
It's everything. It's sound and everything. It's screaming.
I thought, if I remember right, which is way back, way back when, I think there was a bunch of thickets or something in there that had thorny, thorny stuff on them, because I think one of the concerns about, you know, the neighbors was people going like back and, back and forth between, between the shop, right, and, you know, the residences. So I don't remember if there's shrubbery in there that's already like developed. I don't know. You lived there. What's there, what's there now?
There's a couple-
Can we give him a microphone?
The walkabout.
Here you go.
Somebody can talk. I'm sorry, I plead ignorance. I don't know where this gentleman is.
So we're talking about this area right here?
Nope. No, 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 no.
No, he's in the front.
He's actually talking here.
I actually live right here. Yep. But a lot of the people along here, they all wanted to come, but they couldn't make it tonight, but they're all in.
There's existing, there's existing vegetation in through this area. Now, it's mostly deciduous trees, I believe, so that they drop leaves, but what we're saying is, is that in order to get evergreens in through here, we're going to have to remove what's there now, which will then-
Kind of open it up for a little bit.
The sound attenuation that's there now because of the branches, et cetera, will go away, so you're going to hear more sound at first until the evergreens mature, which may take about three to four years. So it's kind of an option.
I think all of these dots are existing trees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I think they're noted as deciduous.
All right. Yeah, we have a big fence that's there now.
Right.
It only goes so far, but-
And we're hoping that the sidewalk that will connect to the sidewalk along, they call it the Farm Lane Sidewalk, will stop people from entering through your property, because this will be a direct route to take, to lead them up and through here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that looks good.
So, can I ask a question? You said there's a fence there now, but it stops?
Yeah.
Where my property line is, it's right along here.
There's just a little stretch of fence, right? Yeah, it only goes for so far. I remember- It's on the site survey.
They used to go around 25 Red Barn Road and then through mine, because we were right on the corner where they would hop over the rock wall and go around the fence, but-
Would it, could you extend the fence?
Yeah.
That's on your property, correct?
That's what's desired.
Is this really, I'm not sure it's going to be the same type of people-
Microphone.
...to get to a Saki manufacturing-
Right, and I should add-
It's possible.
Come on now.
I should add-
That's a good point. That's a good point.
If only to have that problem.
We should add that the, what's going to happen now is that this area will only be used for employee parking, or primarily, I guess there might be some occasion when someone would figure out how to use that, but most visitors will come in through here. This is an area for bus parking, for tours. This is for visitors. This is for employees. The visitors would basically go in, come back, and exit out this way, back onto St. Andrews. Only employees would go this way, although it's possible that you could have a delivery truck coming out that way as well, because that's where deliveries are as too. And this, the structure around here, this was going to be kind of an open-air sewage treatment plant, but it's been disguised with a, what we think is an attractive kind of barn-like building, but in a Japanese style, if that makes sense, similar to the rice polishing building. So, and I think that we limited the hours of deliveries back and through here so that we don't have sounds disturbing the neighbors, like during the summer when the windows are open. And it's really just a, we're required to do screening between residential and non-residential uses, but the existing screening has always seemed adequate to me when I go and visit the site. And I had occasion to be here this morning removing political signs from all over the landscape.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
If you looked at-
He's got, he's called it up on Google.
If you think I can see that from here, you're crazy.
Pass it over.
That's the screening from Google.
We're saying that probably-
Right, and I think the point is that it's mostly deciduous, so it's great from May until now, and then there's no screening.
But you could dig it out a lot if you-
That's the issue, is everybody can pass that down. Thank you, Brett.
You're going to lose, so maybe-
Yeah, all that.
Six-foot black fence or some type of fencing along there, is that what you're looking for to at least keep? Yeah, something like that, too. I mean, I'm not asking for too much. My kids are older now. I'm talking about the other families now that just moved in, as a lot of young families with young kids and-
What we're thinking is it might worsen the situation to remove, in other words, we would be replacing existing healthy trees with lower six to eight foot, because you're not going to be able to get in and through here, big tall trees, particularly not spruces or firs, and that's what you want, because if we put in white pines, they grow tall quickly and drop their lower limbs, and you're not going to have any screening either.
Right.
So the question is really for the board to determine what you think about the adequacy of the screening that exists there now. Is it noisy while you?
It's been a while.
It's been, I didn't realize what I was asking.
It was noisy at times. I mean, you heard a lot of people's car alarms going off. You heard, you know, from people in a parking lot, you know, you heard people beeping the horn or people parking actually right around here with their radio blasting, and we're in our yard listening to it. But, you know, like I said, it's been so long, and my kids are 13 and 11 now, and-
What about Ann's idea of a fence, extending the fence? In other words, rather than take out vegetation, it might be possible to install some fencing along there that would provide some sound and visual buffer, but not result in more disturbance.
So one of the issues is, I'm not sure exactly where the fence begins. Does it go to your property, Mr. Hannan, somewhere around there?
Yeah, so I'm like right here, and the fence ends like right where the parking lot would end, I guess.
Do you know how far it extends?
It extends all the way to the 25 Red Barn Road fell at there in the line, like right where the back of the road ends. Chain link fence? It's a chain link fence. It's about eight, maybe 10 feet high, maybe eight foot high.
Chain link would-
Doesn't do anything for screening or sound attenuation, blocking sound.
But it does prevent people from moving.
Yeah. There was a lot more people cutting through from the guy that lived in my house before me. He told me he had to put up a wooden fence.
And that makes sense, because it's a, it was a shopping grocery store?
Like they said, I don't see too many people cutting through to go, you know, to the Saki place. If they do, yeah, like they said, take the sidewalk, because that's going to be nice. It'll look nice.
Thank you. The applicants were very kind when we asked them to do this, the way they designed it. They're using the same bollards that exist already too, so it'll look like it's a part of a seamless whole.
I'm just as excited as you guys are. I hope this really takes off, you know?
We think it will, so-
I was going to say, so what are your thoughts? I mean, knowing all of what we've just kind of talked about.
It sounds like you're trying to work with me. I mean, I'm not, I'm speaking for like, I wish more of my neighbors could have been here, you know?
We always work with residents. That's what we're here to do.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, is it, knowing what we've told you, you'd have to remove some of the existing trees?
Right.
And it's so, it's from what I can see here, whoops, it's really close to the parking area.
Yeah.
You don't have room, in other words, to really add evergreens-
In front, yeah.
In front of anything, because the trees are already, the canopy's covering some of the parking areas.
Yeah.
So it's a matter, for that matter, you have a lot of trees around you. I just realized where you are.
I have quite a bit. I had a lot of tree work done actually in my own private yard, but the winter time is when all the leaves fall, it's when it's like real, I could see Dunkin' Donuts like it's in my backyard, you know?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's very bright now. And Darby O'Gills with their music. We're not going to go there.
Interesting.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
What would you think of the condition that, maybe-
Mike, Michael.
Put a condition, put a condition in that will visit the site, maybe representative of the board, one of the residents, and, and the landscaper, and could look at the conditions and all agree on something that makes sense?
I think in the past, we've put in a condition that, at the discretion of the zoning administrator, that, because it's fairly de minimis if you're going to just add like some spot-
Right.
-treatments.
So let's have that condition. And Tad, let's remind everyone, is her master's in, is in landscape architecture, so she's knowledgeable of what, what we can do to preserve existing tree health and ensure the success of some sort of evergreens around there to provide against some sound attenuation, et cetera.
Yeah, what they did with the fence, they, they put a big mound of dirt, and it went all the way along.
It's burned.
That was perfect. I mean, it obviously settled in time, but if that was built up again, I mean, just throw a bunch of dirt down even, and then continue to fence, make it go higher. If that's easier and not killing any trees, you know, if that's what you want, you know?
The code back then did not require screening, required an actual addition, a space, a physical amount of space in between one use and the residential property. So now it's just requires screening, and that's up to the discretion of the planning board. But I think we can put to add, to revisit landscaping in northwest corner to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. Does that sound too loose?
So-
It sounds too loose for you, I know.
It's loose, but the applicant is volunteering this condition, so they'd be hard pressed to challenge it.
Okay.
They got two years.
I think it makes sense. Why don't we go out, we do a field visit, we have-
Oh, we're going to, we're going to wordsmith it right now.
Yeah, make it-
Perfect.
Make it reasonable.
Thank you. Coming up. No worries.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Even if you, even if you are wearing a note today and finding-
No, no, no. We welcome feedback, otherwise we would never know.
Is your, is your partner in your, your business of driving around to the breweries?
Yes.
He lives in Golden Meadows?
Over by, uh-
At the high, at the high school?
High School, correct.
I met you two before, now remembering. Yes.
At Mill House.
At Mill House, thank you.
(laughing)
It took me a moment. Okay. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Logan, while you're busy wordsmithing, anything else? You had some comments, Mr. Zarin?
Just one, one comment. Hey, page, it's-
We don't pageinate. Just tell me which-
It's the-
In the first set of-
Is the condition?
It's the second, it's condition, second to the last resolved with the, you know, the twelve, the multiple twelve, and number six regarding revision of the site plan to include any New York State Department of Transportation required elements. I guess we're a little, a little queasy about where that might go. On the other hand, you know, I understand the intent. What about the language, revision of this, of the site plan set to include any conditions to the extent required by the New York State Department of Transportation and this board? So it's something that, you know, that you do in collaboration, so you have an opportunity to, if it's, you don't think it's a, you don't think it's a reasonable condition or something you would support, we're not just cast right into it?
This is some, I don't think that what they required, what they're asking of you is reasonable, personally. The pedestrian improvements that they're trying to attach, but we did, we don't show the, I believe they want you to do three ped phase, right, structures, and they're not shown on the site plan, so we were trying to figure out, I believe you guys are going to be negotiating with the Department of Transportation over this. So this was an attempt to figure out how we would get a plan set if they require, well, let's say they win, and that you have to show them, we were trying to figure out a way to get this on the plan.
Just buy some time to, to put those elements on the site plan.
I, I agree, and I, I know that was the intent, and I figured that was the intent. I guess the only-
But the planning, I mean, if we put your wording, the planning board can't, isn't going to be approving those other elements. Otherwise, you'd have to come back for another hearing, and we'd have to approve the site plan.
That's what I was going to say, that's because if they require, our normal language is just that you get a work permit.
We wanted your support, if you might, if they were, we thought it was, they were being unreasonable and something that you wouldn't even want, and rather than-
You could always come back and ask the board to write a letter, but six is pretty, it's worded so that at the end of the day, whatever DOT decides, it has to be on your plan.
And I'm happy to write a letter of support for your request.
Of course, yes.
I'm satisfied. I just wanted to raise it, and I, I appreciate that was the intent.
No parties here are, you know-
Right.
-in agreement that that's a great thing.
Right. I'm, I'm fine with it.
In addition, since you saw it-
I was going to have this conversation.
I had forgotten that in the last plan set, sheet A-001 has a note, it basically says the location of the wastewater treatment facility is subject to revision, and I wanted to take that off because you have a variance, that's the minimum granted, so as long as you stay within that, the area that they've granted you, you can play around with it. That's per Tad, but you can't just, we can't have a note that says you're going to get to play around with any location, because you've got to stay within your, so we were adding that to remove that note. Then 14-
So we're moving 13?
No, 13 is still there. I added a condition, 14, revision of the site plan set to include the elevation of the wastewater treatment facility as depicted on sheet A-321 in earlier submissions.
Do we have?
Because somehow in the last plan set, we, it didn't get included?
I'm looking at this.
Yes, sorry, these, these were, these were just added, and now there'll be a 15?
There's a 15, revision of the site plan set to include additional screening along the northern residential border as approved by the zoning administrator.
Perfect.
So that's where the wastewater treatment plan is?
No.
Northern, northern is the whole north. It runs from east to west.
Can you repeat that for me again? Revision of the site plan set?
Revision of the site plan set to include additional screening along the northern residential border as approved by the zoning administrator. That's what I, I think I heard today, so you guys can go out, you can meet, talk with Tad, talk with the plan.
Because this is so long, oh. Any other comments? Any other comments? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because this is long, and I'm the speed reader, I'm going to try this one.
Did you have a comment 12? Did you mention 12?
Resolution granting conditional site plan approval, Saki Brewery, November 7th, In addition, since you saw it, I had forgotten that in the last plan set, sheet A dash zero zero one has a note, it basically says the location, the wastewater treatment facility is subject to revision, and I wanted to take that off because you have a variance that's the minimum granted, so as long as you stay within that, the area that they've granted you, you can play around with it, that's per Tad, but you can't just, we can't have a note that says you're going to get to play around with any location because you've got to stay within yours, so we were adding that to remove that note. Then fourteen, uh-
So we're moving through.
No, thirteen is still there. I added a condition for fourteen, revision of the site plan set to include the elevation of the wastewater treatment facility as depicted on sheet A dash three two one in earlier submissions.
Do we have?
Because somehow in the last plan set, we, it didn't get included?
I just, I just have one of these.
Yes, sorry, these, these were, these were just added, and now there'll be a fifteen.
There's a fifteen, revision of the site plan set to include additional screening along the northern residential border as approved by the zoning administrator.
Perfect.
So that's where the waste treatment plan is?
No.
Northern, northern is the whole north, it runs from east to west.
Can you repeat that for me again, revision of the site plan set?
Revision of the site plan set to include additional screening along the northern residential border as approved by the zoning administrator. That's what I, I think I heard today, so you guys can go out, you can meet, talk with Tad, talk with the plan.
Because this is so long, oh, any other comments? Any other comments? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because this is long and I'm the speed reader, I'm going to try this one.
Did you have a comment twelve? Did you mention twelve?
Resolution granting conditional site plan approval, Saki brewery, November seventh, two thousand eighteen, resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five C. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby determines that the size and type of building requires a flat roof and the applicant is disguised as a flat roof for the following reasons. One, the preceding building on the site is approximately one hundred ninety-seven feet, eleven inches long and two hundred sixty-five feet wide, and was constructed with a flat roof. Adding a pitched roof to the building presents a significant engineering challenge due to its large scale and zoning law's forty-foot height limitation. Two, the project design proposes a decorative parapet and angawa to project out over the western and southern faces of the building. The parapet is to be pitched upward, creating the illusion of a roofline slipping down from these faces of the building. Three, the project's landscaping elements include dense thickets of birch trees to be planted along the western and southern faces of the building, which will further disguise the flatness of the roof. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby finds the project complies with all applicable design standards in section one oh eight dash four point five G of the zoning law, including the requirement that facades longer than a hundred feet present as individual buildings for the following reasons. One, the project proposes a decorative angawa across approximately eighty-three percent and thirty percent of the western and southern facades respectively. Two, the project proposes two raised seating areas, small courtyards, to extend off the building's western face and a thicket of gray birch trees to be planted along both faces. Three, the angawa, small courtyard, seating area, and birch thickets break up the building's facade into distinct sections of less than one hundred feet each. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chairperson or is authorized as a need to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrows. Two, revision of the site plan set sheets E zero dash five two and E zero five two A to include the following note. Refer to sheets E dash oh five two B, semicolon, E dash oh five two C, and E dash oh five two D for lighting specification, parentheses, cuts, close quotes. Three, revision of site plan set sheet E dash oh five two A to include the following note. The color of all fixtures, bollards and pillows shall be bronze as per specification for lighting item SL dash one. Four, revision of site plan set sheet E dash zero five two A to indicate there'll be twenty-nine of lighting item GL dash two. Five, revision of the site plan set sheet C dash zero zero four to include the following note. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all disturbed areas shall achieve final stabilization to the satisfaction of the town of Hyde Park Stormwater Management Officer. Six, revision of the site plan set to include any New York State Department of Transportation required elements. Seven, revision of site plan set sheet C dash zero zero two to include the following note. Sidewalks are to remain clear and accessible to pedestrians in all weather conditions. Eight, approval by the town attorney and the town board of public access easement to the town for the sidewalks, granting the right, the town the right, but not the obligation to maintain the sidewalks on the property in form, substance, and matter of execution. Nine, submission of a final stormwater pollution prevention plan subject to approval by the planning board's consulting engineer and the town of Hyde Park Stormwater Management Officer. Ten, issuance by the town's zoning administrator of a stormwater management permit pursuant to chapter ninety-three of the town code. Eleven, approval of a stormwater easement and management agreement, maintenance agreement in form, substance, and matter of execution. Twelve, letter from the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority indicating approval of the utility systems or stating that it has no review jurisdiction. Thirteen, revision of sheet A dash zero zero one A to remove note regarding location of wastewater treatment plant and to identify the final proposed, proposed location. Fourteen, revision of the site plan set to include elevations of the wastewater treatment facility as depicted on sheet A dash three two one in earlier submissions. And fifteen, revision of the site plan set to include additional screening as approved by the zoning administrator in the northwest corner of the site. Be it further resolved, that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a certificate of occupancy, one, all disturbed areas shall achieve final stabilization to the satisfaction of the town of Hyde Park Stormwater Management Officer. Two, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with evidence of the issuance of a state pollution discharge elimination system permit or speedies permit and protection of waters permit for the wastewater treatment facility's outfall into the tributary of the Marichal. Three, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with evidence that the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health has approved the new wastewater treatment facility and permits the continued use of the existing subsurface wastewater disposal system. Four, proof of recordation with the Dutchess County Clerk of the approved public access easement for the sidewalk and stormwater maintenance easement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, congratulations.
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 To you, to us. I just, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to really thank the board and thank the staff. It was really a pleasure, both the professionalism and the substance of the process of the, the individuals and the board, I think, I think it made the project a better project, and that's, that's the goal of the process, and I think the process worked, and I just hope that it lives up to the aspirations that we all share and really does what I think we all intended it to do, and I think, I just want to, I think I speak for all of us, really, thank you all for your experience.
Well, first, thank you for polishing our halos up here, we appreciate it. I, I would agree that this is a better project now, particularly with the sidewalk, just small additions. I like the fact that you've created the small courtyards, as I said, that's within the code of how to re-articulate a big massive front, and I want to say also that I appreciate the fact that you guys had to turn around, I know, with, with the flooding that they had, your clients, the turnaround was actually pretty rapid considering how much we kept going through. And again, this is reactivating a site that's just been lying there in desuitude for so long, but it's going to be exciting for us. I drive by right now and I think, I, I can see people already walking around, I, I see festivals, and I believe we'll be seeing a festival-
Cherry blossoms.
Cherry blossoms.
Yes. I believe we'll be seeing a, a small festival at the groundbreaking ceremony next Monday. And once again, the public is invited to this, as I understand it.
Yes.
Let's hope we don't overwhelm the site, and it's been a pleasure as well, so we'll see you on, I think we'll all see you on Monday, we've all RSVP'd, I hope. Yes, are you guys going? No?
We'll decide. I haven't, I don't think I, I realized there was an RSVP.
I didn't know.
I stopped at standing food when I was ready.
I think, I think they want an RSVP, but look, we'll, we'll, you're all by it to just show up.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Nobody RSVPs anymore anyway, until the last day, I've discovered on inside hosts, so, at any rate.
All right.
Thanks again, see you Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not, no, I'm in Florida.
Okay.
So, a quick question, Victoria. I have to reopen the public hea-, oh, I have to reopen the public hearing, but Jeffrey Groves is not here, so just reopen.
It was good, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Jeffrey Groves Estates, make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, as a reminder, the applicants met with our consultants, the engineering consultants and planning consultants, on October eighteenth. They noted at our offline, they noted at that time that there were some technical items remaining. However, Ms. Axelston issued a memo on Tuesday with Mr. Sotera-
Yeah.
Our CPL team, excuse me, issued a memo, that when we went through the memo, or when I went through it carefully today, it seems as though it would have made about thirty conditions to an approval. I know we're getting there, but one of them, it's a huge amount, and this is the kind of thing that makes Tad and our consultants crazy in trying to make sure they're all completed. Addition, they only have six months with two ninety-day extensions possible, and once that's happened, you can't complete. Some of them really require more conversations, I believe, particularly the replacement of the box culvert, that, that seems to require more engineering. Pete, can you want to elucidate on that a little bit?
Yeah, um, you know, I was looking at this and really, as far as the site plan comments, except for maybe the concrete box culvert and, and then number eight, which is like bond estimates, which are usually a condition, like normally, I mean, everything else is just so like minor, one more, one more, you know, set of plans and probably like seven of the eight, like comments under site plan will be gone.
Oh, wow.
And then, you know, the subdivision plat, out of the, how many we got there? About eleven?
Eleven with, with some adding subgroups.
Yeah, with some letters, yeah, with some letters. So, but again, I mean, probably, probably like eight or nine of those could be, you know, knocked off with one more, like submission, and now, oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is, good.
Mr. Kaufman, we're, we just opened the public hearing.
We just opened the public hearing.
You're here.
Oh.
We start our meetings at six again, remember?
No, it didn't.
That's why you weren't here.
Oh, it's the thing.
Yeah.
It's worked out well.
Well.
Do you need to con-
Have a seat.
Do you need to contact Mr. Watts to tell him that we start at six?
No, I told Mr. Watts to basically email that.
To stay home?
We, we-
So that's what we were just discuss-
We talked too much tonight engineering-wise.
That's what we were just discussing.
Well, so what we were saying is, is, you know, probably out of these, out of these comments, probably eighty-five, like percent of them could be like knocked off with one more, you know, set of plans, and what I was thinking about, like today-
Don't give us all big sets up here, plans anymore, to revise.
Well, what I was thinking about, and I wanted to run this, run this by you, so we don't have to produce whatever, how many number of copies, ten more sets of the big plans and all that stuff, what about if, because again, they're mostly like tech, technical, if, as long as there was one or two sets here for planning board members and then we got a set, so that they don't have to go through a major like reproduction, because again, there's just, I hate to use the word, technical, but there's-
They are technical, that's why-
There's things that, no offense, you guys probably don't really care too much about, and there's a couple of things I, you know, I would like to discuss, but, you know, I think we can just have a very limited list of conditions for, you know, December, you know, the fifth, and by then you probably will have some of these other approvals, you are, you know, you're almost there with the health department. I told Brian that I'm going to call the county public, public works, because I need to, I need to get on about one of my projects, and I told Brian that I'll ask them about this one here, because I believe it's been months and months and months, and you guys haven't even gotten a response from them, so I'll see what I can do, you know, to push it along, I mean, they've already, they've already approved it once.
I know.
So it's just a matter of, hey, just, you know, we just need to make sure that you're still okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, you haven't changed the road, so.
Right, right, exactly.
I'm not sure why they have to go through the exercise, okay.
Well, because it's, again, we changed from, you know, single-family lots to like town, town homes, and it's just more of like a courtesy, hey-
They sent a letter saying that it needed to be reapproved.
Oh, they did say that?
Yes.
CPW, yes.
Oh, they did?
He said they have to re-
It does not have to be reapproved?
No.
No, that you needed, they, they sent a letter saying that they needed to take a look at it.
Yes, they did.
Right.
How many months ago?
No, I agree, so I'm, I, I told Brian that I will call him, because I need to, I need to ask him too about my own stuff.
Yes, they did, they did say they needed to look at it again, that's true.
So, so as long as, as long as the planning board, you know, is okay, if we just do one set to me and if there's one set here for, you know, the file, and then, we can, we should be able to take, you know, carry this.
Well, you know, which suggests, you know, eleven by seventeens, but that really doesn't, that's nearly going to show nothing.
I need to have, I need to have a bigger set.
Well, no, not for you, obviously, I meant for the-
Yeah, I think we usually ask for three large sets at this point, so that the consultants have one and-
Right, okay.
The files have one, but we don't need all sets.
So, um, you know, while, just, you know, a couple of things that I wanted to get, get some input from the board. You know, Lou, one thing for you is, you know, I should have probably picked this up way back when, when even it got approved the first time around, because from, from what Brian said, that concrete box culvert was part of the initial approval that Fuss and O'Neil did, but as, but as I said in there, here, after I just, I started looking at it more, I'm like, it's a small box cover, it's only two foot high by four foot wide, I'm thinking to myself, why are we doing a concrete box culvert when we could just do a larger, you know, HDPE plastic, you know, pipe and-
Right.
It'll be much easier to put in, it'll save you all kinds, all, all kinds of money, and it's actually better for the town to not have to deal with a box culvert, because if there's ever an issue with a box culvert, it's just very difficult to like repair it, so I don't think it's going to take Brian Long like to look at it, and I just, so I just, I want to make sure that, like, you knew that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we had discussed it, you know, when we met, and so.
Yeah, so, and again, if that's not quite like ready, I mean, that could be like a condition, because I think we want to, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, we, we do want to try to do this on the fifth, to give them condition.
Yes, I was, I was-
Right, I mean, we wanted, I mean, we wanted to do it tonight, but-
But there were so many conditions, as Victoria, when she was writing the, the resolution, with, some of them were hard to figure out how to word as conditions, because they're open-ended, they're too open-ended here so far for it.
Yeah.
The conditions should be more explicit.
So, I mean, you know, if that takes, Lou, so if that takes a little more time to work out the box culvert, we can, or box culvert versus pipe, we can make that like, like a condition, so let's, so I'll work with her.
Right, well, I spoke to Brian on the way up and I said, you know, he, I could hear the kid crying in the background, I said, stay with your young family, he probably was thinking, no, I'd rather come, but whatever. Anyhow, so, I, I said it was not necessarily, you know, important.
So, um, you know, a couple, couple other things, one, one, you know, when we met, we had talked about, one, one of the planning board's comments was that in front of like the units, maybe coming up with some more, some more landscaping besides, you know, the trees and all that stuff, but after discussion at the agenda meeting, it was like agreed that, hey, you know, that's okay, because, you know, the HOA or the property owners, they'll probably do some plantings around, you know, the foundation on their own, so-
Right.
So that was-
But we wanted a note.
A note, saying that they're allowed to.
Yeah, we just wanted a note on the plan, just to make sure that, hey, you know, it's going to be lawn area at, at a minimum and there's-
They don't want it paved over.
No parking of vehicles in the lawn area.
Oh, okay.
You know, so.
Right, and then there was the curb cut issue that was, we were discussing and elongated lower curb, but-
Yeah, yeah, we'll go back to the other, the other, and then the other thing was, Victoria and I both, that both have picked up, there was a lot of easements that were on, on the schedule that said, but basically, I think that every easement on the schedule was going to, was going to be granted to, you know, the town, and that, you know, that can't be right, you know, the open, the open space is not going to be granted to the town.
Right.
There was, there was a whole bunch of other, there was some like sewer easements that aren't going to be granted to the town, there was, there's very few easements that are going to be granted to the town, so if you guys can just revisit that and then-
So Victoria had given me a memo, and, you know, she was pretty explicit, and I was very helpful, and I thank you, and so I revised many of those, hopefully closer to what we need, and I did send it to you-
I know you sent them yesterday.
Yesterday, and, you know, trying to figure out who gets what, you know, the Sewer Corp versus the homeowner association versus all the homeowners, you know, for the cross easements for grading and, so.
There's a lot going on there. Well, one of the things that I think we should work out quickly is I want to make sure that the subdivision plat, the easements, match the easements that we're reviewing, because some of the wording, like there was an easement shown on a plat that wasn't shown on the document, we want to make sure everything matches up.
Right, and there was a couple of your comments, I wasn't quite sure I understood, so when you get a chance and soon-
Yeah, we should, we can have a follow-up.
You know, to look at, I had a couple of questions, otherwise you'll take a look at the, what I sent you and, and let, you know, get close, you know, hopefully get it right.
So the other, the other thing I wanted, I know that you had ordered a title search, we were trying to figure out if you had filed, for instance, did you file the open space easement the first time?
No.
So now this one has to cover both sides.
Yes, so, but I do have needs and bounds for both open spaces, so I'm going to cover them in that.
So none of the easements were filed last night?
No, and I, and I'm going to, the offer session will be for both roads.
Okay.
And, you know, so the storms and, you know, all that.
That almost makes it easier that it's for-
Right, so I'll get all that. Now, I had, ten years ago, sent to Mr. Rodenhausen, the, the list of easements, so what I can do is I will, and I had sent them to you as well.
Yeah, you sent me the ones.
So I will go through them, and the ones that are duplicative, we'll just keep the new ones, and the ones that were, you know, necessary from before and still remain so, I will put in draft, you know, in recordable form, and then, so we'll hopefully get that, and I don't know if it'll be a condition or not, but I got a funny feeling on December fifth, we won't be fully-
No, they probably won't be done, because after you get through me, the town attorney has to review some of them, and he didn't want even look at them until I gave my comments, but you're that much closer.
Yeah.
But if, if we can reduce the number of conditions, just remember, he has the proper amount of time then to make, work through all of them.
You know, what, it is helpful to me, and I know that some of them are, you know, maybe a little too open-ended, so that the staff and the consultants have a difficulty saying, well, I don't want to take it upon myself-
Right, there's nothing-
To approve something.
There's nothing objective, I say.
Yeah, so, but I mean, conditions are very helpful to me, and I now check them off, you know, I have, you know.
This is going to have conditions, I'd just like to reduce the amount. Tad, literally, if we do something with thirty conditions, she's going to have a meltdown, I can assure you. Part of it is that-
You freaked out the last time, I was forty-two.
Oh, she freaked out.
You weren't, you weren't in the room after the meeting.
Well, Marshall was, Marshall had it like a way about him, Lou, that was, I mean, you know.
Yeah, he was very nice, I'm not as nice, I know, that's true.
No.
Pete, other items?
Uh, just, you know, a couple of things, light poles, so I think there's two light poles on the road, and I just want to make sure that we have a note on the plan that says that the HOA is going to be responsible for the maintenance of the light poles, and then, when you see-
Are they going to be in the town right away?
I want them out, I'm asking here that they be outside the town right away, and that we need to just make sure that the HOA documents cover that lighting maintenance.
Hmm.
And then on the, the detail for the light pole, it shows typically in, you know, a parking lot, as we have in other spots in town, we have, you know, twenty-four inches of a concrete base and the poles on top of it. I think, you know, my opinion is, you know, for this type of a multifamily-like development, kind of a small-like development, we're not going to have, you know, high-volume traffic, I think it would look much, much better if they were flush with the ground, rather than having them stick up. So, is that you guys' agreement?
Absolutely. And, or, or we had also talked about having colored concrete or painting them or doing something, so it's just not a ugly concrete.
Yeah, I mean, they painted them over there at the Hyde Park Town Center, and they look pretty good, but I don't know how long that the paint, paint will last on the basis, I mean, this is, this is like brand new and, you know, my opinion is that they're flush with the ground.
It's a little, you know, when it's a parking lot versus a-
Yeah, this is just a little, right.
Residential street, a little different.
That's what we were thinking.
Okay, so that's fine. And then that was pretty much, oh, the, the only other thing is, we do have a, down by where the stormwater pond is, at the, more towards the county entrance, there's a modular block retaining wall there, maximum height in some spots is eight, eight feet, goes, I think it goes from like two to eight feet, so we should have a, we should have a fence on top of that, because we don't want anybody to-
That's right.
Fall over the edge, anything over four foot should have a fence on it, so.
I think you had that in the memo.
So, yeah, so, um-
Is everything you have now in the memo?
Yes, we're, no, I mean, yes. So I just want-
I didn't memorize it, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to go through-
I knew that, I'm recognizing a lot.
No, I just want to go through a couple of things with the board to make sure that they're in agreement. So I suggested a black chain link fence, just-
Which is allowed by code.
Yep.
Okay, just so it's, doesn't stand out, but we know it's going to be like enough to keep, you know-
People from falling in.
Kids from jumping off the edge, so to speak, so, so I think if we just work together and we get some of these knocked off the list, and Ryan and I work together and we'll be ready, ready to roll on the fifth.
Right, well, you know, I had reviewed the memo with Brian when we got it, and nothing on that seemed, you know, overwhelming at all.
No, they're, they're minor stuff.
It's just, you know, you can't say I'm not a little disappointed that I don't have an approval with conditions or multiple conditions, but-
I promise you'll, I can't say you'll get, I can't say we're going to vote.
There'll be more Christmas lights the next time.
I promise they'll be voting at the next one.
Good.
But I want to clear up some of these things, like I said, it was, Victoria and I were struggling with-
Some of them are just too open-ended to turn into a condition, and honestly, it saves you time now, because if we have to confer later on about what the condition meant, that's delay.
I got you.
If you want to make an appointment, we can come up, we can lay the map out and go over the easements together.
That would, that'd probably work out. That'd probably be the best.
It may even be.
Because there's just so many in the.
You know, that I'd want to be there too, yeah.
And the town attorney would, it would probably be helpful to have him there as well.
Well, if Warren wants to show up, welcome his, you know, input. Well, he said he didn't, he wanted to hear from you for, you know, your opinion first, but that's okay.
Well. He'll be getting it that day.
Yeah.
Well, he got copied on my original, he was copied on my original memo, so.
Okay.
The only issue is, is that if you're, do you, are you hoping to do this before the December meeting?
Yes, because the subdivision plat really needs to, the easement shown on the plat need to be consistent with the easements that are needed.
Then who would like to be in charge of trying to schedule this meeting with Mr. Raplansky in tow?
I will take the lead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
VP to schedule a meeting.
Yeah, next week is.
No, Warren's schedule is busy, I just read, you know, the third department's decision on a case he was on. I know he's involved in lots of other things besides just this town, so.
Well, we do have, I know the holidays are coming up.
He made that, he made that, made that clear recently.
Very clear.
Because you're here, that's why.
He doesn't work for me, so I didn't make his comments on that email, but I was shocked.
I think it's gonna be most helpful if you guys take a shot at revising that subdivision sheet before the meeting.
Okay.
Based on the comments you've received.
Okay.
Coordinate it, make sure that the easements, you know, the language, or the, you know, the documents are coordinated with, you know, the map and.
Right.
And I'm going away after Thanksgiving, but I will try to schedule it for the day I get back.
The day you get back, or before you go?
No, the day I get back.
Okay.
Otherwise it's Thanksgiving. I'll send, I'll send.
Does that leave any time, though, to make any, to make, to get something in, so we're ready, so we're ready for the 5th? Not to try to push you, of course, but, I don't know.
I'll send around the gates.
We'll talk about it. All right, there you go.
Thank you. Let me start from my right. Ms. Anaplin, any comments?
Forgive me if I'm totally out of the loop here, not only to you, Mr. Kaufman, but to my fellow members.
Okay.
On the site, and I think it was at the last meeting, I think it was Ms. Weiser who had noted that when you were coming down the front steps of one of the houses, there was nothing but grass, and when you were coming from the driveway and you got out of your car, there was nothing but grass. That was, was that resolved that we have?
I believe that's gonna be on the plans.
Okay.
That's part of the, I think those are, that's one of the things I've, I probably should have wrote Brian tonight, but I believe that's gonna be resolved.
Okay.
It will be, but yes, that's a good point. Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
Uh, no additional comments.
Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
So, everything that I was, would have commented on, CPL worked into the memo myself, so I don't believe see anything else. Well, first, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, Megan, a motion to adjourn this to December the.
5th.
5th.
So vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it sounds like Brian has a little bit of work to do, some of this he may, he'll take a look at for the box water. Box culvert, sorry.
It was a long night.
At least you didn't take.
It was a long night.
It was a very long night.
Early morning.
At any rate, and up early this morning, removing signs from around town, so. But otherwise, if there are another comments than what we had from CPL, so I think these can be worked through quickly. The bigger issue is going to be the easements, and I understand that, but Mr. Kaufman, you heard, the first thing you should do is really revise that schedule, so that we know what's, what easements are going to be where, they won't be all held by the town.
Yes.
And if we can revise that at the beginning.
Yeah.
That'll make it easier for Mr. Raplansky, I can assure you, because I think he'd be in high dudgeon if he saw it in the first place, and probably march out lately, if he was doing it lately, so.
Well, that, on my revised easements, I did, you know, hopefully get the right parties, but what I can do is, if Ms. Paul Adaro is available, I can call her, you know, tomorrow or Friday, and we can just get a, you know, this one goes to this and this, not, you know, the body.
Get a roadmap.
Just a roadmap for the proper parties.
Right, I thought also we should do like a quick checklist of timing, because some things have to be conveyed before others.
Right, okay.
So.
So if you, you know, if I could call you on Friday, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
So from what I'm hearing is, if we can address the memo that we received and the easements.
We'll have a resolution prepared to consider approval at the December 5th meeting.
All right. I thought you promised you'd have one either way, but.
Well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna have one.
We're gonna work on it.
Even on all parties.
We're gonna have one, I just hope we don't have it, to be, I want to get a few, whatever the opening conditions are, that's what I want to get resolved.
I think we're gonna be able to take care of the memo, the conditions, and, and if I can narrow down my questions with Victoria, then I think we're really getting very.
I know the, the legal easements will be conditions, because they usually are, they have to be filed, et cetera. But if we can get you both on the same road, going in the same direction.
We'll circulate, but we were thinking either towards the end of next week, to give you guys some time to, you know, revise the map a little bit, the subdivision map in the easement language, or maybe.
Oh, you mean the meeting with Mr. Raplansky and your shows? Okay.
The end of next week, or the 19th, maybe.
Okay, um, let me, yeah, okay.
So you gotta, so you gotta talk to Brian and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll circulate something.
All right.
Yes, we did.
Okay, I may see you beforehand, if I, if they want me at these meetings, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
That's right.
The next item on the agenda, Enclave Solar Farm, the applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approval to install a solar array on an approximately 25-acre parcel that sits to the rear of a project that we already approved, as well, for 25 two-family, or 25 lots, each containing a two-family homes. So you've really cleaned up everything nicely, we're ready to circulate tonight. Just like, I'm sure you thought we were, because it looked really good, but you did, I thought, at any rate, so. Anything you guys want to add? Nicole?
We received the comments from Liz and reviewed them, I had a conversation this afternoon with Liz, we went over a lot of the comments, and the majority of them are very minor plan edits, but just a couple of them that I wanted to, to go over briefly were regards to the supplemental buffer plantings. The, the tree line that's going to remain to the north of the site is quite extensive. It's, at one point, um, thank you. Thanks. So this is just a little extra visual, and I have extra copies, thank you, Vanna.
Just got that.
Yes, we did.
Now, just to help you orient what you're actually looking at, this is.
Good.
I'm looking, looking down from the farm to the north into the site, and you can see between our site and the property to the north, there is a very heavily wooded area.
So where's your, where's your site?
Just if you, if you put the, the circle.
The oval at the top?
That's, it's like this.
The racetrack?
So this, this is our site, our site is down here, where the, the circle is, and the existing access road, this is us.
What is this circle?
ATV tracks.
There you go.
I guess.
Yeah, I think it's dirt bikes, or ATVs, or, or whatever they have on their property up there. I know, it's, it's a little confusing, because you're used to looking at it, at it this way, so yeah, you can see this is the circle. So there is going to remain, this is our fence here, and this will be cleared, but this will be the remaining tree line. So there will be quite a large area of trees, very mature trees to remain in that area.
I believe it's between 25 and 35.
Yeah.
You mean that's the width of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the concern in that area was that it is kind of a strip, and it's deciduous, and that's why we specifically said supplemental.
Right.
So the idea was, if we have a lot of tree trunks and not a lot of foliage down at the bottom, this is what I wanted the board to consider, to just supplemental, meaning not like a hedge, but, you know, filling in for where there is a lack of low growth.
I thought we had talked too, because to the north there, that is a farm that I believe isn't scheduled to be developed. First, it's in some type of, I'm not sure, I don't remember the name of what, what the property is to the north.
Briggs Farm.
Briggs, yeah.
Right. So.
This is not, Briggs Farm is two parcels over.
Oh, I apologize.
And that's been set aside into perpetuity?
That's why, I thought it was the.
So it cannot be developed, it's the adjoining parcel where, where.
Where the racetrack is.
Whatever this activity is.
Yeah, where the racetrack is.
Has, the, the house is actually to this, to the west of the racetrack, and then the Briggs property.
It's on the other side of that.
It's on the other side.
Got it, apologize.
So it's just a question of, and this is just for the board to consider. These are deciduous trees, as I recall.
Yes.
So they will lose leaves, and the concern is only if in the future this parcel is subdivided, there'd be no way for us to require screening. On the other hand, it's not anything there right now, so.
What are rebuffering?
Yeah.
And, and it's pretty substantial.
Oh, yeah.
The homes along the western edge now, but.
This could be subdivided into future homes, so that's all, those are considerations, but the board will consider this.
Okay. One of the other comments was to have additional plantings over in this area to kind of fill in the gaps, which we've shown, so I was just kind of wondering, you know, what other additional on top of what we're already proposing, and it's not on this plan, but we have, what's that?
We didn't bring the.
Right, but our areas of trees.
You've got landscaping and trees, I think, when, I'm not gonna speak for Liz, but when she writes, she's usually asking the planning board to consider whether that's sufficient.
Yes.
The, the other place was the northern half of the eastern boundary.
Over here?
Yeah, because at that point, it's a narrow strip running from about 18 feet near the northern part of the eastern boundary.
This is 25.2 from the tree line to the property line, and then 89 feet.
So, so you're showing us the trees, I think your land, your land actually showed it once. The limits of disturbance are different than the existing trees.
No, it's a disturbance.
It's, I'm talking about, yeah, this area.
Okay.
Oh.
This boundary, because right around here, this, this part, there, there is wood in here, but it gets down to the 18.
Right, to the property line.
Right, between what's retained, and the idea again, it's deciduous, if not a whole lot of low.
I understand what you're saying there, because, again, these properties can be subdivided for housing in the future, and remember, there's, there's a clearing that has to occur, the line here, you're seeing the clearing that must occur for them to have proper solar penetration to make this efficient work. So the side over here, it's wider there than it narrows, but it stays fairly narrow along this side. So, and this is another case where if we want evergreens there, within, it's about 18 feet wide, you're gonna have to have tree removal, and then planting of evergreens, because you can't go, you cannot incur into this area, that's the required area that must be open for adequate solar penetration. So this is something for the board to consider as well, based on Ms. Axelson's recommendation.
Just mention, I believe, part of that area is an area where we are gonna clear and allow regrowth to happen, so just to stumps. So you are gonna have five or six feet of low-growth bushes.
And then to keep it capped, you said to keep it capped at that height as well.
Right, so I think that would provide more of a natural barrier, in addition to that, just wanted to point that out.
Again, the concern is just that with deciduous trees, when the leaves are off, you can see things, and I, I will confess, even though I'm all for solar farms, solar arrays, and the production of this energy, I wouldn't want to live next door to it either, I'll admit straight out, it wouldn't be my, my preferred view shed. Some people would, just not me.
You'd have quiet neighbors.
So again, these are things for, these are suggestions from Liz for the board to consider.
Okay.
Particularly along, as she said, that, that border into there. Other items?
Which I think is here, right?
Yeah.
One of the comments was the pollinator seed mix, which I know, we've, oh, thank you, we've gone back and forth a little bit, and there were some suggestions made. The reason why we went with what we proposed, and it is for a northeast region, and it is ideal for, I think, the natural environment, as opposed to what was proposed, the height of what was proposed was averaged three to six feet, which would kind of grow up into the panels, so what we had proposed was the, a lower growth mix that's still a pollinator mix, it actually has varying bloom times.
Bloom times and height, I went through all of it.
Okay, okay, so yeah, so that, that's why we went with, with the one that we, we had proposed, was mainly because of the height.
As I said, I recommended the one that, in Liz's memo, the first one, the only reason why I said that is, the one that you proposed is really, I think, meant more for people looking at a pretty meadow that they want to, like, gaze upon. It's got perennials in there, one of them, Galardia, doesn't do well in this area, and some don't reseed, they just sort of wander and take over, like Rebecia, Goldstone, Black Eyed Susans.
Yeah.
Those don't reseed, they just keep, well, they reseed and they keep spreading, and spreading, and spreading. So I don't know how much maintenance you want to do on it. The first one that Liz suggested, that was the one that we had at the other solar array, it's meant more just, it actually just seeds, there's no perennials in it. That's why I thought it would be better for you, and nothing grows above, I believe, 40 inches in that mix. But you can take a look at it again, I responded by email. I mean, this is pretty minor in the weeds, as we say down here on this.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things.
In the flowers.
Yes, in the flowers. I mean, I'm glad we're already at this point.
No, I think that was really it that jumped out, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Axelson, comments?
Well, let me just, I'll just update the board a little bit, because Nicole and I had a pretty productive call. We discussed some of the erosion and sediment control plan comments, just about calling out some other items. We discussed a concern that Tad had about orange construction fence, and we immediately came up with an alternative, and I expressed this in the comment, because an orange construction fence is pretty expensive, it's another layer of fence, and they already have some fencing proposed, so the idea is to come up with some kind of a bright marker along whatever fence they're using in that area, and just to give us some kind of, some kind of a specification about how frequently and what will they use, even orange survey tape, and it's just for during construction.
As we noted in it, we have stakes, we have, you know, we note that each phase has to be staked for the fence by the surveyor. So typical stakeout for that is a wood stake with posts around it, the limit of construction is wood stake with a post around it, so that we know where they are. The frequency will be visually, so that when the contractor's there, they can decide running a string line between them for the fence, and a string line between for the limit of work. So I don't have an exact frequency, but when you're out there with, as a surveyor, we'll be setting them as needed along the outside perimeter corners and that, so that next amp, as their construction operation, knows where they have to go and where the fence goes. And typically, the fence itself is staked with an offset as well, so the fence is staked, and then we have an offset stake, so that, because if you put fence on top of where the fence is supposed to be, you have to rip that fence out to put the one in.
This is true.
You typically put a stake, a smaller stake in the ground and say, this is where the fence is, and there's five feet with two corner posts, and they know that's where it is, and they run string ties between them once it's cleared, you know, for the fencing and that.
Did you follow that?
Yeah, if you could just, you know, kind of describe that on the plans, and that, that way I can go over it with Tad, you know, so she's. The one comment I wanted to note to the board, in case you didn't read my review memo, is that I thought the visual assessment plan was perfectly adequate, and I don't think there's any need for more visual assessment. I don't know if you looked at the plan sheet.
Yeah, I did.
I thought it was pretty clear. Um, let's see, we had a discussion about decommissioning plan comments, and I think we sorted some of those things out. What I'm looking for is more detail in decommissioning plan text that kind of speaks to the code, and then ultimately, like we did with Salt Point Solar, we'll end up with a decommissioning plan sheet with notation on it, so that that's real clear. And then I'm gonna have a discussion with Tad, because I had a few comments about doing a plan view of the cabinet, the slab for the cabinet, and what's on there, and I, I'll just want to get a little more clear with Tad about what exactly she needs on the plan, and again, Nicole and I discussed the Salt Point Solar plans as an example. So that was handy. And then we're waiting for follow-up from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and those are the big ones. A lot of the other ones are technical items, and we still have to issue a SWIP review memo, so we're hoping the end of this week, so.
Thank you. Ms. Zataro?
Uh, one comment quick. Can on a plan where it shows the former, former stockpile area that we had for the other project there, the existing contours show a hill there. Has that hill all been like leveled when they first started the other project?
Actually, no, that's the little hill, the one you mean, that's kind of right in this area.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is actually construction concrete that has been crushed from the old houses that were demoed, and we, when they were demoed, we stockpiled that there to use for the sub-bays when we were redoing the road underneath the item four, they were gonna crush it further when we do the gravel road for this road. That was what the intent was, was to reuse it, recycle it within there. That just happened to be a cleared area, where they could stockpile and work within that cleared area.
I thought there was another area that was a little bit, yeah, right up in it.
Those here, yes, that's actually, those are old piles from the original one, that the intent is to use some of that down at the Enclave project for subdivision. One of the things we have to talk about is, based on the duration of which this is still moving along, so the timing may not work correctly, so we have to work with Sam in Enclave to determine whether that comes out sooner than later, to keep this project moving forward.
Okay, yeah, so Liz just showed me where she covered that, where she covered that here, so, yeah, so we just want to make sure, because that's obviously gonna be part of your soil and erosion control plan, because that particular part of the site, the eastern part of the site there, that's, most of that slopes, slopes of the property off, you know, slopes to off-site.
Correct.
You know, property, so we want to make sure, and I was just looking at that, and I'll talk to Kyle tomorrow, who's gonna review the, review the SWIP, because he reviewed the SWIP for Salt Point Solar too. I just want to look at that one area, because it looks like there's a existing drainage area that goes off-site to the east, and it seems like there's quite. area that goes offsite to the east, and there seems like there's quite a bit of area that comes there. So, we just wanna make sure that that area is taken, taken care of.
Yep.
Erosion control-wise, and then, you know, runoff-wise, so.
Okay.
The rest, the rest should be, should be okay.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Ms. Palladaro?
We have a resolution prepared tonight to classify the action as a type-one action and circulate.
You're supposed to be smiling and saying great. I'm just trying to...
Resolution of approval.
Mr. Pickett, any comments? Yes.
Sorry, just back up. I know that you've already been in touch with CHIPO, but we're gonna have to have our lead agency.
Yes, yep, yep, we had the conversation, yep.
We already talked about it, yep. Perfect.
Just for the board identification, can we go into that really quickly? I'm not sure. So, it used to be that we sent a letter, our standard secret circulation letter, to, directly to the State of Stirk Preservation Office. They quit allowing that, they don't take paper. They only take...
Online.
You have to use the Chris online sources, and because we don't have, you can do it on your own, you get a unique number, et cetera, et cetera, but we don't have an ability to do that. So, we've been trying to work out the process for how we'll go about this in the future. And what did we work out?
I can send the form to the applicant to then load onto Chris, or she could give me permission, she could log on, give me permission to load them on. Either way, if we're listed...
But you have to log, that's what I'm saying, you have to log on, you're gonna do it directly?
One of us will have to log on and load it electronically, and then whoever's listed as a contact, which we should always be whenever an applicant submits through Chris. So, we would get a contact that they received it, and then when there's some kind of decision, we would also be contacted by email. Yep.
Like I said, this is a little bit of a change, so I'm just making sure that the rest of the board is aware of how this operates now. Because since we're the lead agency, it's up to us to coordinate that review, but we no longer can initiate it with CHIPO, they have to. So, we just have to make sure that we're all...
On our access.
Yes, that we're on the same page here, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, comments?
You're still waiting to hear from Fish and Wildlife, I guess. Did we get a response from the fire department?
We did. I actually have a copy of the email correspondence from Mr. Scala, who said that they didn't really have any comments, that only the main concerns for them were gate access and emergency disconnect slash power shut-offs, which can all be discussed and identified during the pre-con meeting.
Okay. The other one was just a general question, and I was looking, these, these are kind of a medium voltage transformers. Are they wet or dry?
I believe wet. Usually with type of vegetable oil.
Right.
Type substance.
Right.
I can get you more details on it if you want.
No, my question was, is if there's any type of containment for that oil, if something were to happen, instead of just going out on the pad, being vegetable oil is not a big one, if you're gonna have, have your choice, but it was, when looking at it earlier, I just, it was a question I had.
You're speaking above my pay grade, so.
Yeah, me too. That's why I was heading up to him.
So, if it's hazardous, right? So, you're asking if it was hazardous, if something happened?
Yeah.
How would it be contained?
Yeah, it's definitely not. I can get specifications on what is used in these transformers. I'm almost a hundred percent certain it's not a hazardous material, and my, the way it's been explained to me, a bit above my pay grade as well, is that it's a substance very similar to a vegetable oil-like product, but I can get details on that and potential containment solutions if...
If it's required, I'm, I mean, we've got a number of them going in, it's just, when I got thinking about it, it's, you know, they have both wet and dry type systems, so it's, if they're wet, what if? You know, just...
And I'll confirm which type of system that it is.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, I salute you for asking that question.
That's an awesome question.
Because I didn't, and I know that Tad would definitely be upset if she thought that oil, any kind of oil substance were going directly into the ground.
I had one catch on a fire about thirty years ago in a parking lot.
There you go.
Oh.
That's why you knew.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Ms. Wasser?
No, but I thought Blanding, that piece on Blanding's turtles was very interesting. I learned more about that than I ever needed to know.
Oh, I have...
Hyde Park is one of the, one of the three communities in the state that has the species...
It was quite, it was interesting.
Thank you.
My, as far as the boundary, I think with what they have aligned on the north and the west, east side, as far as existing growth that's there, I'm happy with that.
And we are allowed, just per the code, to consider existing vegetation to be sufficient, because it's up to us to determine the degree of opacity, quote-unquote, from the code. Ms. Dexter?
So, to build on Ms. Wasser's comment about the turtles, and our previous comment about the fences, so we have the little, the stakes, and they're five feet offset from where the, the actual fence for completion is, is there also turtle fence?
Well, one of the things that we're waiting to hear back from, when we had the discussion with the DEC for the subdivision project, they didn't require any type of fencing, just to provide educational materials for the contractors and to...
Right, but you're not, you're not, it's not like a big field that you're gonna be digging up again. This is like, very discreet houses that you're rebuilding, right? Whereas this is a big, open space, it hasn't been, I mean, it was, it's been years.
Yeah.
But we all know...
A lot of the space is open, and as far as disturbance goes, it's, it's usually the, the posts in the ground, we're not, you know, it will be graded, but as far as...
We're only grading those spots that Pete talked about, you know, which are the mounds that are old fill mounds. The remainder of the site is really gonna remain just treated and stopped, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, when I read the report, it said that, I mean, within a half a mile, there had been a sighting, and they roam point eight tenths of a mile, and so you're gonna be right there. So, they didn't say from which direction, which could be why the other portion of the project didn't really require anything. So, in my thinking here is you're, that entire area is gonna be graded, which to me becomes a big construction site, that if they're try, they love construction sites, they love the overturned gravel, they love that to lay their eggs in. We went on a walk once on a site kind of similar like this, it had been like, kind of, and we found all kinds of turtle eggs all throughout the site. So, when I read this, I'm like, well, I would hope that we're going to put the silt fence around, the turtle, the turtle fence, around the areas, especially when we're go, right, you know, before you go in, to do all the grading and moving and stuff, because, especially...
Within the array area.
Within the array area. And, of course, it's also dependent on the time of year, right? If you're doing this in December, not so much, I don't think there's going to be any turtles laying eggs. But if you're, if you happen to catch that prime season, then I think we should seriously talk about making it safe. Because I see this differently than the redevelopment of the, of the buildings to the, to the south.
Okay.
Also, this will be going to the DEC?
Yep.
Directly from us, so they'll make comments, too.
True. And then my other question was, I was reading through the glare study, and I must say, I don't remember this from the, from the previous solar thing, but I was reading through it, they were talking about the yellow, and, and if I read it correctly, it, like, like looking in the sun briefly, and you look away and you can see the...
That's what that is, the yellow glare, that's what that is.
The...
I had to look it up.
Whatever the term was, that it, it...
At least in after energy.
Residual.
Yeah, at least in after energy.
The residual. And I'm like, wow, I don't remember seeing that on solar panels, so I'm just, I'm just a little curious. It seems like these actually do reflect quite a bit. I, when I worked at a solar company, the ones that we used, they didn't reflect anything. I mean, it, there was no reflection at all, but those were residential. So, now I'm wondering, if these are commercial panels, do they do it differently? And are they actually, they actually do reflect back and, and leave retina?
Got that arachnida fungus.
They're like, which one wants this one?
So, we, we had to use, I did look at the previous submissions, and they were using one, a modeling software from Sandia National Labs, and now they've, because of cybersecurity concerns, made us use a different vendor, so I'm not sure how that changed.
If it's apples to apples, yeah.
They're really, so that maybe they're using different terminology. The panels themselves are not much different than a typical residential panel. The actual surface of those panels are not meant to reflect, they're meant to absorb sunlight energy.
Right, they're supposed to absorb, yes.
I think that's taking, it's looking at the sun as it, you know, crosses across the sky, and most likely, I would imagine, the glare is coming off of the outside metal casement, you know, case of those aluminum, so possibly, you know, as it's hitting at the right angle and the right time of the year, might throw off a glare from there. It's really not, in my, in my view, necessarily gonna be coming off the face of those panels.
Right, 'cause it, that's, that's just...
It's supposed to absorb the energy in the first place.
I was gonna say, yes, for a solar panel to wanna give up any kind of solar is, okay, 'cause I was reading it going, why is this so different than the previous submission? And I, I did read about the Sandia thing, so, all right. So, the panels should not actually have glare, the panels shouldn't. There may be elements to the site, once you develop it out, that has metal parts on it that might...
That is what I'm thinking, is where that majority of that glare is, and at extreme angles. I think if you look at the times when they...
Yeah, there's, I noticed it was like winter and high summer, so the two extremes.
Yeah, 'cause if you go out there on a sunny day, and you're, you could look right at the panels, they're not glaring back at you. I think it's catching it at certain particular times where it might be reflecting off the outside casement of a panel.
Does it take into account the, the manufacturer and the model of the solar panels when it, when these studies are done? Because, again, there are some that might have, especially residential, that may have additional absorption, as opposed to, because, and it costs more, whereas the commercial may not, because you're talking volume.
Sure. That's a good question. I imagine it, it does, because our designers are the ones that worked on this, and, you know, they put in CAD files of our full project with the exact location, so it's really, it's, it's pretty accurate. I think they got down to the module level, I could, I could ask.
It would be interesting to know if it's actually, 'cause, you know, this manufacturer could be very different from a different manufacturer.
Sure.
Especially at the commercial level.
Yeah, on this, normal glasses, you get four percent reflection off each surface, so you get eight percent, if you got just a piece of glass, so you got eight percent total reflection coming back off of it. But someone may put on anti-reflection coatings on those surfaces to get more sunlight through, so it'd be interesting to know.
Can you follow up on that for us?
We'll do.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Yes, these are.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Oliver?
I would just like to weigh in about the trees on the east and the north, that I think that the existing forests that's there and existing sites, I think will be okay with, without the screening. Thank you.
Did you, are you saying the east and the north, both?
Yeah, I think they're both, given what's currently there and topography and, you know, I don't, I don't know how realistic subdivision would be in there.
No, it's...
And I agree, too.
It's the, it's the common, you know, rock...
Rock and swamp.
Yeah, rock and swamp, rock and swamp.
Good old Hyde Park.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli?
Getting back to the yellow glare, if down the road there, the area around gets subdivided, and there are homes, will there be any impact of that yellow glare on any of these homes? Or we're just like, looking like way too far down the road?
Sure. I think, if I am correct, and I don't have the glare analysis in front of me, I think where we actually observed the greatest glare impact was the receptors we put sort of right on the Cream Street side, which we're gonna address with screening. All the receptors that we put to the east had, did not have this large impact, and mostly to the south, did not. It was really just the, if my, if my recollection serves me, I think it was like, there were two receptors, one on Cream Street and one on our property, just off the site, where we had the biggest issue. And I think we're gonna address that through, you know, using evergreens as the screening. So, so any subdivision on the east side, I think, would be fine.
I'm gonna echo my colleagues, I'm fine with the present landscaping that's been proposed.
Thank you. So, I don't really have any additional comments, most of what I have has been covered. I did wanna point out that the, the new stockpile area you have somewhere in through there, it's looking really teeny, like you're gonna pile up four foot high of something. Considering how big the other stockpile areas are, I know that, that one is, they're both from offsite, but you think it's gonna really be that small from this site, too?
But remember, ninety percent of this is not grading.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, the, the piles that are there, that are up there, that we talked about, were from the other site, are either going to move to the other site or be spread flat within our site. So, other than that, we're not stripping off top soil, we're not, you know, like a normal subdivision where you're building roads.
You're probably, I'm only saying this because Tad, if Cat goes out there and measures it, it's like somehow huge. I wanna avoid this in advance.
I understand.
That's why the comments are...
Okay.
We've talked about it, we'll show it larger, so that we don't have any concern.
Just saying, you know, strict constructionists, that's all. I'm trying to avoid issues down the line.
Understood.
And then, we can work on the, you'll see my email about the pollinator mix, 'cause I'd already emailed to you on it.
Yes.
That's why it, so, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution classifying the action, declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review, and referring the action to Dutch County Department of Planning Development. Enclave Solar, resolution number 2018-30, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning, planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as type-one action under secret, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project, and directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to all other involved and interested agencies, three, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-M of the general municipal law.
Is there a second? Nope. Second, you mean? He, he made the move, you wanna second it?
Oh, second.
It was a late night for all of us.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion he carries? The involved and interested agencies are DEC, NYSERTA, New York State of Stirk Preservation Office, Dutch County Department of Public Works, Roosevelt Fire District, Hyde Park Highway Department, Hyde Park Town Board, Hyde Park Conservation Advisory Council, and Hyde Park Fire Inspector. And do we wanna, do we wanna note which ones should have maps and which ones shouldn't?
Or have...
Okay. Make it easy.
And I'm gonna just, you know, based on the input from the board, I think those two comments about supplemental buffer plantings, I don't have to worry about those.
Correct.
Okay, good. Good discussion.
That's what my ears heard, too.
Good discussion.
My ears don't hear.
Thank you.
And would it be appropriate to schedule the public hearing for the nineteen?
I don't see why not. The only issue I'm going to tell you is, is that because you're the ones, because you're under NYSERTA, and I guess you have to go through U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, we're not gonna conclude secret until that's done. I'm not gonna conclude secret until I get a final response from USAF to the US. I know that takes longer, but I'm not gonna have us do a secret determination and have to amend it, like we did last time, because of the Fish and Wildlife Service disagreeing with what we decided based on DEC.
Yeah, I've had the, I have correspondence with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. My understanding from them is that they're not looking for any kind of field work or report, they're just going to propose some mitigation measures for the site.
They're going to propose mitigation measures just out of the blue, because they're They're gonna propose mitigation measures just out of the blue because they're not requiring any field work?
I, that's, that's-
That's not giving me a lot of faith in that federal agency, sorry.
I know. I know, but that's, that's what they email-
Mitigate what? What are they mitigating?
I, I think the large mitigation that I've seen, uh, in a project of Opinger was strictly presence of bats, and they gave us a clearing schedule, uh, or, uh, window, which we could. That was, that seemed to be the big comment.
Right.
And so now I will tell you that in the last project, we had the same issue. US Fish and Wildlife Service, their determination for how to determine the presence of the northern long-eared bat is different than the DECs.
Right.
Right.
Northern long-eared forage inside forest between lower canopy and upper Indiana goes into cleared areas. So we're gonna have to work this out somehow, um, along the way. But I'm surprised that they're just going to assume the presence of Indiana and northern li- long-eared bats, I guess.
Actually, they hadn't even mentioned bats.
Oh.
Were you mitigating?
It was regarding bog turtles.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
That was their only concern till far.
And you've mentioned to them about the DEC-
Right.
... documentation that we had about literature-
Yeah.
-being provided. So that's where they said they would dovetail on that literature for, with regard to the bog turtles.
So there's bogs and blendings on the site?
They're not saying there's bogs, but there's the potential for them to be somewhere.
As I said before, in the US Fish and, there's potential everywhere in Hyde Park for bog.
Right.
So you're gonna end up with turtle encounter type, you know, notes and whatever.
Mitigation documents.
Yeah.
And, and what you talked about, and is, is, you know, appropriate to just follow along with that perfectly.
Let's just see what they, what the-
It's still fencing and, I mean, it's-
Right.
It's not a difficult.
When you said setting the hearing, did you, you meant for the second meeting in December?
The second, yes, 'cause otherwise it wouldn't be the 30 days yet.
I, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. Just, we, we may have to hold a public hearing open.
Understood.
For a while. Okay. So make a motion to set the public hearing for December the 19th?
Yep. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
And can-
Good to get this going.
Can I contact you? 'Cause I still wanted to-
They always want you to come.
-drive in your truck on the site.
Yes, they always come. They always, they always wanna come for you.
Oh, okay. You don't know this story.
Okay, not a problem.
It's for Christmas, he makes eggnog.
We have a little holiday party. I'm family.
Oh, no.
The eggnog.
Yeah.
And you walk home.
I'm sorry to hear that, but you-
Okay. All right. So what do you want?
I just want to candy the corners.
Yeah, we can't, I can't keep him between him and Rod.
I was just gonna say, Rod just got better. Now you had something too?
He was rear-ended.
Someone wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, I don't wanna be on the end of it.
Probably texting.
Forty-five miles an hour. So, he, uh, my truck, the cab, went, that's the empty cab.
Oh. Was that in the middle of New Pulse?
Nine W eight now.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you don't look any worse for the wear. I'm not sure how that happened.
Uh, thank God I had a big truck.
You do have a big truck up in there.
And that was, I had, I literally, I mean, literally three weeks ago, I got a, uh, new, new truck for me, and I have never made a payment on it, and now it's totally in the body shop.
Unbelievable.
Sorry to hear that.
Well, you and Rod gotta knock it off.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
So you'll, you'll, you'll follow up with the glare study?
I will.
Thank you.
And have a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. In, in next month or so, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is a sign permit approval recommendations for Verizon. I believe we have, yes, welcome back. Good to see you. Sorry I had to wait all this time. So, as you know, design unity is required for signage within a site, within a site, as well as, uh, on a building. You have a memo from Ms. Moss, basically just describing what we believe the design unity would be. So when we had Mavis, it's in the record that we said, so you're just gonna set the design unity here. Mavis are letters that are mounted onto a beadboard surface with a frame around it. The background of the beadboard is the signature Mavis teal, I guess I'll call it. Um, the letters, I said, are metal and they're attached onto the sign. I went and checked. So, what, excuse me, Verizon's been looking, sorry, what, four months before this building is even finished to have this sign approved. So Tad has worked with both the architect and with Saxton Signs to determine how he would, her fourth, him's fourth, determine design unity. Because with, the bigger issue is, is that, and I believe you have some printouts here.
Yep.
Verizon, this is the newest one you should be looking at?
Yes, yes.
Where it is centered, Verizon, with the check. So the bigger issue is, is that on some of them, you can actually have what's proposed, meaning the beadboard is behind it.
Okay.
Then at other locations, you can't, there's no room for the beadboard.
Ah.
So if you read the memo, what we did was to say that-
A little confusing, but-
Yes, that there's a way to have design unity on the same building without having the beadboard back, as long as they use something consistent with the same kinds of letter. So it's two-inch-thick aluminum. The color lettering can be selected by the tenant. And then the signage of the building trim is also going to be the two-inch-thick aluminum letter. So you'll have at least the same style of letter, maybe a different font.
Yep.
Maybe different colors. And I know I had a lot of emails back and forth from everyone, so when we, in the code where it discusses design unity, it says it can be achieved this way or this way or this way. It's not an and, so it's not cumulative. As long as there's one consistent throughout, then that way it's design unity. So-
Okay.
I babbled a lot there. Do you wanna add anything to that?
I think you said it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, that, thank you for explaining that.
Well, it's rare to have the architect come and actually represent the-
Yeah. It's nice.
We're, we're honored. By the way, the, I, I gotta tell you, I'm sure other board members hear it. I had people in the grocery store walking up to me saying, "I love that building back there." And I'm like-
Oh, good.
"Thank you." I said, "You should be complimenting the architect, not me," but we did work carefully with them.
I think it was a joint effort.
Yeah.
And I tell them, "Wait till you see what the front building will look like next," and then that third back building next, because it's getting people excited now to see the activity.
Should the board confirm for the record that this design unity is going to apply-
Throughout.
-to the other building as well?
Mm-hmm.
So what, one of the things that confused me, though, is that it repeatedly talks about, um, the sign permit application for building number four, but I, it also talks about town center north design unity description for building number four. It doesn't say-
I know. So she limited it to building number four.
Yes.
To the other building.
But I think since this board is taking the time to look at it now, maybe you can just say it's building four and three?
We acknowledge it, building four, three, and, uh, what's the third one?
Two.
Two.
Two. I mean, this has to be throughout the site. That's, that's the purpose of this, so.
What all building?
That's what was, that actually was what was really confusing me, was how can you have design unity just for a building? But you referencing another building on the site, so.
Now, emergency one, you know, has its own style, its own look.
Right.
As long as it's, again, a dark, uh, background beadboard, and they're free to do however they wanna do it otherwise, so.
So I think that we, that's a great, um, suggestion, is that the board consider saying that this, this type of unity is what we would like to see across the site.
Right, but not including emergency one, right? 'Cause that's on the nine, are you-
No, it's all part of one-
Oh, it's all the same, so yeah.
It's all on one site. In other words, it doesn't have to be comport with the site that's next to it, even if it's the same owners, because it's a separate parcel. But the way the code reads is it's supposed to be within the same site, same parcel.
Right.
This is why, for example-
That's why I was confused.
-we have to signage across the way, um, at, with what used to be Stan Franks-
Oh, yeah, the bell tower, yeah.
And the same thing, we did it with, uh, Mr. Seruppa's album, El Hua Camo. You love to say that. Me too. Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
What are the elements for Tad's education?
The ones that she's listed here, numbers one through seven.
Those were taken from Mr. Gro's letter to Ms. Moss. She was passing that along to you.
And we are agreeing, in other words-
What they have proposed.
The gable ends receive a burl trim beadboard package signage board with, now, this says black border, and by the way, border is not with an A. No offense, just an O. Otherwise, they'd be paying rent. Um, it doesn't have to be a black border. I think it just has to be a, actually, what are you thinking? You're the architect. This is your building.
Well, you know, in reality, I think it should be, on this building, on the gable end, it should be the color of the gable end.
That's what we think.
You know? I mean, it, it should just kind of blend into it personally.
That's what we think, too.
The border, the color of the gable end.
Yep. The, the, the overall paint, which, I don't remember what specif- what color that's specified, but it's a beautiful color, by the way, too.
It is a great color.
Yeah.
And it's a standard hardy plank color, but it's-
Oh, it is?
Wow.
Sure.
What's that?
So a dark border, the two-inch-thick aluminum-mounted letters, again, color of lettering can be selected by the tenant, and that the, if the signage is not on the, if it doesn't have the goose lip, goose neck, then it has to be backlit. That's basically the design unity, right?
Yeah.
And can we also-
The beadboard is indicated, I think, on the site plan.
Yes.
Right.
It should be centered.
The Verizon is centered.
Yeah, no, not just, all of them should be centered.
Okay. That'll be another element of design unity.
Because otherwise, we're gonna have left, right, and, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I feel like we should just bring up another issue since the architect's here.
Hey.
The approvals required the awning on the Amish Market-
I was gonna bring, excellent. Thank you. I was gonna bring that. Good job.
Okay.
Go ahead, continue.
We practiced this before. Um, it requires the, the awning on the Amish Market building to come down completely, which may result in some kind of patching or, or other look. The board had requested that it be painted, 'cause it's blue and chippy, and the applicant volunteered to take it down. Uh, but we were thinking that you should reconsider, or should you reconsider? You're welcome to come back to the board, and the board could-
Amend the resolution.
-amend the resolution to allow painting instead of removal.
Well, and just-
For a short-term solution, it might be painting.
This isn't your, this isn't your problem.
And just-
I'm not even sure of this one, 'cause I thought it was getting painted, so this is a little bit of a surprise.
Well, well, when I was out at the site this morning, uh, Nick was there. And so we were just, we were, you know, like chatting, and he was talking about, you know, painting the awning. I said, "Well, I'm pretty sure the approval says that you're supposed to take the awning down. It's something that you guys have proposed." So he was like, "Oh," you know, and he, he wasn't really sure. So I said, "Well," he said, "Well, I'd like to paint it." I said, "Well, all right, well, you know, we can go bring it up." And then we were talking about it, you know, this afternoon, and so this is a good time to bring it up, so I mean-
Ms. Leibolt is the one who said, "Can you paint it? 'Cause it looks so terrible." "No." "Okay, then can you take it down?" "Yes."
Well, oddly enough, we've already done a Photoshop of some colors to try and get something, so we're a little confused, so.
No, that's good. So I mean, as long as the board's all right, we could just, we could just amend, you know, the resolutions. You know, as we were talking about, it may look, it may look worse, you know, as you brought up that-
I think it would look worse.
Once you take it down, you don't know what's gonna be there.
It's gonna look worse, actually.
Well, 'cause there's no brick behind that thing, so if you take it down, it's gonna be a mess.
Oh, there's no brick behind it?
I don't, I don't think so.
And you're gonna see whatever's on the roof, and-
Oh, yeah, then that's not good at all.
We, we thought, just simply paint it the same color as the brick that's there.
Fine.
Just make it-
Make it disappear.
Just blend it in. Just don't let it stand out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's just, the site's gonna look so nice, and that's, yeah.
Well, the graffiti on the thing, you know, there's, it's a little rough, so. Yeah, they want to, so they were actually trying to get colors from us, so.
Or Sherwin-Williams web gray.
So- I, I would rather just make it the same and disappear to the background.
It, it, once you guys decide on your colors, if you submit them to the board, uh, then we can work on our end.
Okay.
To amend, yeah.
Just revise the resolution.
If they, if they wanted to paint the brick, that web gray would, that would make sense. Just do it all that and make it go away.
It'll make the-
See what we can do.
It will just fade into the background.
Make everything look a little bit related while it's pending.
Totally agree. So we'll, we'll see what I can-
Okay.
My favorite about that building is the, the elegant light fixtures on the outside. It fits so well with that 60s modern brick. Isn't it amazing?
Yes. I'm being facetious, sorry.
Save those for you, Michael, so you can put them at the house.
Actually, have you been inside the building?
Not in a long time.
It's really great interior design.
No, it's, so this resolution does not necessarily acknowledge the design unity we just outlined. That, that's for the record, unless you think I should change it.
Let's change it.
Whoop, okay.
The third whereas is where it refers to design unity established for this location?
So then let's make a motion to establish the design unity as listed-
As per the memo dated November 6th, 2018?
Well, no, as discussed at this meeting.
Oh, okay.
The idea will type it up, 'cause the memo's limited to building four.
Design unity established for this location discussed.
May, may I get a motion to, try that again? Sorry?
Establish design unity-
Establish design unity for the site, as discussed, per the discussion held-
For this evening's discussion.
On November-
So I've, what I have is discussed at the 11-7-18 planning board meeting.
Okay. And then, uh, Ms. Whitman will type it up, so that you, you discussed four items. It was that the word would be centered, the, uh, the lighting-
Letters are two-inch thick, the lighting.
The letters and the roof and doors.
Beadboard background, beadboard background with the border where, where possible.
So that will be the design unity for the entire-
Five, five elements. If there's no, if there's no room for no beadboard exterior and border, then it has to be backlit letters as opposed to goose neck.
The goose neck exterior light.
Yeah.
So, motion to establish design unity.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'll have to type that up, and we'll have to revise some of those, so. And do you have the resolution in?
I do.
Yay.
So Town of Hyde Park Planning Board resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A4D, Hyde Park Town Center North, Building Four, Verizon wall sign. Resolution, that's okay, resolution number 2018-51, whereas, 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 the, uh, the applicant is required to follow the design unity established for this lo- location as discussed at the 11-7-18 planning board meeting, and whereas assigned location is over 125 feet from the primary axis, and the applicant has requested that the 10-inch standard letter height be relaxed to 15.375 inches for the letter I in Verizon. Now therefore be, be it resolved at the requested relaxation of the letter height from 10 inches to 15.375 inches as granted, and be it further resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for Verizon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice to see you again.
Good to be up here.
Really, we're proud of what you did.
Oh, thank you.
No, it's, so the other issue that's, it's, um, this isn't about signage, but there for a while, um, the applicants, your, your clients, were proposing canopies like Mavis over the building where there's supposed to be the wooden, um, I'm not sure what term to call that architecturally, sorry.
Yeah.
That, I'm not sure what term to call the, the-
Yeah, it's, we'll call it a baby pergola.
A baby pergola.
Baby pergola.
But that's, so, um, Tad decided that that was not a de minimis change, that that would have to come back for site plan amendments, so I, I believe it went away, but all I could think of was, does the architect know about this, too? I thought that was a really-
We're very much in contact.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's good. So they've, they've really been great, honestly, so.
It's stinging baby pergola.
What's that?
It's stinging baby pergola, not no-
Baby pergola, yep.
No canopies. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Because I prefer the pergola. I thought that was an only nice, cool part of that look.
No, it was, and that, and I think it makes sense and important, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We were just curious, because we haven't had a lot of communication back when Ms. Leibolt first suggested it, when Tad then said we'd come out for a site plan amendment. It kind of went away and never got proposed again, but I wasn't sure-
It, it went away.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I, I'm being, I'm dancing around the fact that sometimes things seem to go away, but then they get built and they get asked for forgiveness afterwards. So that's what I'm trying to get down to here, so.
I do, I do come up and make periodic stops up here, just to kind of keep track of-
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah. No, we, it was just up last week, so.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to see you. Again, it's a, it's a credit to your eye and level of detail that these buildings are truly being transformed.
I was gonna say, everybody is just so excited. It's, it's hard to believe they're the same buildings.
The residents really are stopping me. "Hey, that looks so good back there."
And then plus with the sidewalks going in.
Yeah.
That whole area is just gonna be so rejuvenated.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So, thank you. Good to see you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Next, next item on the agenda, approval of the 2019 planning board dates. Ms., uh, may I credit my colleagues? There were several errors. I caught one, and then others caught other errors. That means you're really reading. Yay.
It was a group effort.
A group effort. So, as noted, the only thing that's really important here is, is that, um, and we, all the dates seem to comport, and we can always cancel one if we have to, except that, as you see, the, the first date in January 2020 would be January 1st.
All right, yep.
Twenty twenty.
Yes. So make a motion-
We like to plan ahead.
Yes, well, it's because when you're in December-
We're planning for-
You need to set public hearings.
I know.
Yes.
It's around the corner.
So, make a motion to adopt the submission, the meeting dates and submission deadlines as drafted by Ms. Whitman.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then, approval of minutes of August 15th. Everyone had a chance to read them. If not, we can, okay. And Ms., Ms. Wazir is recused from this one. So make a motion to approve the minutes of August 15th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the minutes of September 19th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now Ms. Wazir can approve the next seven minutes. It's October 3rd. Make a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Pickett, you are recused, 'cause you were absent on the, the last one, which is approve the minutes of October 17th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Very nice.
I love a six o'clock evening, Tom.
Yeah, you too.
I really-
I'm like a zombie right now. You must-